Welcome back to the Daily Drum on WHUR and Sirius XM Channel 141. This is the Inside segment. I'm Harold Fisher. Tonight, we have a sit down with the new Chair of the Prince George's County Council. How is the federal upheaval impacting the county? Are budget cuts and layoffs looming for Prince George's County residents and workers? And what's the deal with the curfew at National Harbor? Is it working or is it not? We're going to talk about all of those things and much more with Edward Burrows III, the new Chairman of the Prince George's County Council. Thank you so much for joining this important conversation.
Oh, thank you for having me. I appreciate the opportunity to spend some time with you today.
So first of all, congratulations on the being voted in as the new Chair. I want to start by talking about how that actually happened. How it happened is was a bit unexpected. You were the Vice Chair. Councilmember Jolene Ivy was the Chair. Kind of run through exactly what happened with the voting and everything else.
Absolutely. So last year, unfortunately, one of our council members resigned. And that created a 10-10 split dynamic on the county council. And customarily, the county council votes for its leadership in December. In December, I was able to obtain enough votes to become the Vice Chair. However, no one was elected Chair of the County Council in December. Ms. Ivy argued that because no one had achieved the six votes, including herself, to become the Chair for Legislative Year 25, that she would essentially act in that role until we were able to break the tie. And so that's essentially what happened last week. You know, colleagues got together really in an effort to move the council forward. And we were able to elect a Chair.
So take me inside the smoke-filled room. Because there this, this was obviously a conversation. It didn't happen right away.
Yeah, absolutely. You know, we, we, from the day we could not achieve consensus in December, colleagues have been talking, trying to build consensus about what we wanted from our leadership team. And I mentioned to you that we had a colleague resign, and so we're still only under 10 members. But in March, we elected a new councilperson, Shayla Adam Stafford. And so that election essentially broke the tie. And while Ms. Adam Stafford is not on the council at this point, she will be sworn in in June. And so what we wanted to do as colleagues is get rid of this us versus them, five versus five. And how could we sit down together, as many of us as possible, to figure out a path forward? And so I became Chair, not just with members of my caucus, so to speak, but also members of other caucuses on the council. And so we attempted to come together and we did.
You, you speak about caucuses, going all the way back to when you were on the, the school board. It's been not the smoothest ride as it relates to, you know, some of the political maneuvering and some of the things that, that you and members of your caucus on the school board were trying to do. Now here we are on the, on the county council. You've gone from council member to Vice Chair, now to Chair. You know, what, you know, what's your vision moving forward in this new leadership position? And what are you going to do to make the road less bumpy?
Yeah, I mean, it would be ideal for the road to be less bumpy. You know, we want to unify and work with everyone that we can. Oftentimes, when the, the road is perfectly smooth, not much is happening. You know, that's, that's, that's the reality, you know, sometimes, you know, in these positions, people would rather you come, cut a ribbon, say nothing, do nothing. But that hasn't really changed the conditions for the residents of the county. But my goal is to work with everyone. You know, we're in the middle of a structural deficit that is only projected to get worse. And this structural deficit has been in place long before most of us joined the county council. Now that we are here with over $171 million deficit currently projected to almost double and, 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 you know, very soon, we need to generate additional revenue quickly into our county. And we understand that raising property taxes is not an option. Our residents pay some of the highest property taxes in the entire region. And unfortunately, we have some of the residents who have helped built this county leave the county because of the exorbitant property tax. And so we need to increase our commercial tax base very rapidly. I have a council resolution which creates the groundwork for attracting data centers to the county. And, and let me be clear, I want to make sure that we do it in a way that's responsible of the residents and of the environment. But at the end of the day, we need to generate revenue very quickly. And we've seen counties in Northern Virginia bring in an additional 700-plus million dollars in tax revenue from these data centers. And so we're looking at the most responsible way to do that. Something else that I'm looking at is Parks and Rec. We give over $400 million to Parks and Rec in Prince George's County. Unfortunately, we still have children with nothing to do after school, on the weekends, and throughout the summer. I have young kids on the side of the road all throughout the county begging for dollars for basic football equipment, choir robes, you know, things of that nature. We live right next to the nation's capital. And any given day, you can see young people from all over the world in our monuments and in our museums, but we have kids in Oxon Hill and Temple Hills who've never seen the monument, who've never been to a Smithsonian museum. And so I, I am going to be working very hard to reform the Parks and Rec Department to have them step up and put those resources directly into communities that have been forgotten about. So those are two things. And lastly, I want to transition in the next county executive in the best way possible. Our next county executive is literally coming in under the most difficult of times when we have this massive budget deficit, when we have so many Prince George's County residents being fired from the federal government in need of support, in need of job opportunities, in need of resources, just to make their own ends meet. I'm concerned about what happens to them financially, what happens to the foreclosures in a county, what happens to the small businesses in their areas that they patronize. I mean, what's happening at the federal level is having a catastrophic impact on our school systems, on our health department, on our residents. And, and, and it's been devastating. And so I want to make sure that the council is in full support of our next county executive because she's going to have some terribly difficult decisions to make.
Couple of things that you mentioned, I want to go back to the data centers. Yeah, in Northern Virginia, those data centers are bringing in money, but that didn't happen smoothly either. There was a, there were a lot of protests from communities that were near these, these data centers. Are you prepared to, to address any of the concerns that the communities in Prince George's may also give you a lot of pushback?
You know, we want to learn from some of the hiccups in Virginia, which is why we're starting with this work group with experts, community residents, environmentalists, our labor unions, our business community. We also will be working hand in hand with our planning side of park and planning so that we approach this as a team. And here's, here's what I'll say. For me, raising property taxes on residential communities is not an option. Because that is not an option, and because we are in a major structural deficit that has been in place for a number of years that has not been mitigated, we must increase our commercial tax base rapidly. And so if data centers is not it, then I would ask people to come forth with what that could be, practically speaking. But the reality is, is that we have tens of thousands of federal workers being impacted by the man in the Oval Office. We have hundreds of millions of dollars of federal grants. Almost our entire health department is running off of federal grants. When you look at the school mill programs and the school systems, federal grants. And so unless, I want to make sure that we bring these data centers in in the most responsible way possible. But the alternative is not do nothing. Because we'll have so many people suffering without government's ability to help support them.
You mentioned young people and the Parks and Rec Department. But more broadly, do you believe that the National Harbor curfew is, is effective? This, of course, going into effect certainly last year because of some, you know, some pretty volatile issues there. We saw what happened at Pentagon City last Saturday with young people, first warm day. And, and it was crazy. Let's just, you know, call it what it is. So what are your thoughts about the curfew at National Harbor? And any thoughts about any additional kinds of, of intervention with young people to keep the county, you know, safe?
Absolutely. The curfew at National Harbor is working to keep the harbor a great place to enjoy, to live, to shop. And so I would encourage everyone to go to National Harbor. It's worked out well for the National Harbor. But what I can tell you is pushing hundreds of young people away from National Harbor doesn't quite solve our problem holistically. The reality is, is that we have to create additional programs that young people are excited about. And we need them in those programs as young as possible. One of the things that I saw very clearly when I worked in the state's attorney's office and I was running the juvenile diversion units, is that it's much harder to reform a young person when they're 18 as it is when they're 14 or 13. And so we need to invest in our mentoring groups that are operating on shoestring budgets. We need to identify the young people in crisis, working hand in hand with the school system, working with the community, the, the, the community-based officers on the front end. And because a lot of these kids are bored, they have, they have nothing to do. They're hanging around the wrong crowd. But if we engage them doing productive things, they would also rather do that. But if you wait too late, it becomes much more difficult.
I have so much more that I do want to, to talk to you about, not only about the budget. I want to talk to you about education, again, what your, your vision is, public safety. We have a lot certainly to get to. So please definitely stand by. We're going to take a break. But we want to remind people, don't forget, you can see this and every edition of the Daily Drum Inside segment via podcast on our website, whr.com. The original Quiet Storm with Raheem Devon is next. That's on WHUR. I'm Harold Fisher. This conversation continues on Sirius XM Channel 141 and 96.3 HD2 in just a few seconds. Welcome back to the Daily Drum on Sirius XM Channel 141. I'm Harold Fisher. We continue our conversation with the new Prince George's County Council Chair, Edward Burrows III. I want to continue the, what we were talking about on the other side about, you know, some of the things that we're seeing with, with young people, particularly the ATVs. They were out in full force, you know, the weather is changing, spring is here. That continues to be an issue. Any thoughts about how that can be addressed? Or is that just something that it is what it is?
You know, it is important that we provide fun alternatives for young people. And it, as a matter of trying to prevent young people from riding ATVs in the middle of the night. You know, we have tried to crack down on that. You know, we do have certain rules in place where officers should not chase them because we've seen matters get worse, travesties frankly. But it's important that we provide fun, safe alternatives. Because if not, that's what we'll have.
Have you had a chance to also talk to Chief Aziz, Malika Aziz, about, you know, some of the, the police change chases that have ended tragically this year? Not necessarily obviously involving ATVs, but all of this is kind of, you know, part of that same, same bundle. Do you think that there needs to be a revision of policy regarding police chases?
You know, that is definitely a conversation that I will have with the chief. We want to make sure that we're able to hold people accountable when they commit crimes in, in a way that doesn't impact anyone else. And, and so there, there is a balance that, that we need to strike. Not just with PGPD, but also some of our municipal police that we have seen engaged in this behavior recently.
Have you given any thought to utilizing, you know, drone programs? I know Montgomery County has successfully utilized their drone program. And correct me if I'm wrong, Prince George's County Police, do they have drones? I'm not exactly sure about that. But so that's the first question. But secondly, if, you know, if they do, could that be one of the answers to addressing some of these more dangerous situations around public safety?
I believe they do. I'm not sure how robust it is at this current point in time, but I'll, I'll go and find out. But anything that we can do, including utilizing technology to make our community safer, you know, we absolutely need to do it. Thankfully, we have seen a reduction in certain crimes like carjackings. Our carjackings have gone down. Our homicides have gone down. But, you know, one is too many, and I do understand that. And so the council looks forward to continuing our work with the police chief and all of our municipal chiefs to be more proactive as it relates to these matters, which is why I am so passionate about Parks and Rec. Because when you have over 400-plus million dollars sitting in one agency, now recreation, youth sports, boys and girls clubs, these mentoring groups, right now they're operating on shoestring budgets. And if we can invest in those programs in our hotspot areas, I believe we can get to young people much early on. When I was on the school board, I sat on the expulsions committee. And what I'll tell you is that it, it very, it very rarely starts with an expulsion. You know, generally speaking, it starts with attendance issues and suspensions. And, and then they commit their big act and get expelled. And so how do we reach young people at the first sign of crisis? And we can utilize recreation, sports, the arts, all, you know, all of these things that we can encompass through Parks and Rec to, to divert these young people to something better.
I do want to talk about that structural deficit and, and the budget that the acting county executive, Tara Jackson, has, you know, has proposed. And certainly it is a proposal, but arguably, this is the most serious budget issue that Prince George's County has faced in modern times. Some of it as a result of, you know, what, what we're seeing from the White House. But, you know, some other things, you know, more, you know, more local from the state and, and also in the county, you know. For example, one of the highest profile issues is Prince George's Community Television, which has been, you know, public access is a big thing, not just in Prince George's, but across the country. What other cutbacks are possible from your perspective?
You know, unfortunately, you know, you know, under the current acting county executive's budget, we see, you know, an elimination of CTV. We've seen reduction of grant programs. We've seen a reduction in litter programs, which I don't believe the council is going to support. And among, among other things, I know at one point in time, we were pushing very hard and we were all on the same page about not wanting to furlough our, our, our residents. I would also say that a lot of the programs that council members have put forward, I'm concerned that there will be no money to fund those programs. There are a couple of bills currently designed to help our federal workers with stipends and with different financial resources. But that money has to come from somewhere, and the county budget doesn't have it. So a lot of bills that have been introduced, I'm worried about their ability to make it because of the financial implications. There are several things happening at the state where the state is shifting some of their responsibilities to the county in order to balance their budget. And so all we can do is cut. It's so essential that we increase our commercial tax base and revenues. That's always been the case. It's even more important now that we're in this structural deficit.
Well, you said there was a time when everyone was on the same page as it relates to furloughs. Are they, are you no longer on the same page? Do you foresee, you know, furloughs or even, you know, permanent layoffs of county employees?
I definitely believe we are still on the same page as it relates to furloughs, at least the majority of us. It is so unpredictable for us to set our budget because of the occupant in the White House and the impact that he is having on these grants that we run almost entire agencies off of. And so we are essentially at the federal government and the state's whim. You know, one moment we believe that we'll get X amount of money in federal grants, let's say in one department, $50 million federal grants. Now that's cut. We have to figure out where else in our budget can we supplement that? And that could have an adverse impact on, on county employees.
Let's talk about, a little bit more about the state. On Monday, the state superintendent of schools said that the U.S. Department of Education, what's left of it, is not going to reimburse more than $400 million in funds that were marked for, that they, that the state marked for education. These were COVID funds. That's, you know, we're, we're talking, you know, getting close to a half a billion dollars, you know, $418 million. And there is likely a trickle-down effect. What impact do you believe that's going to have for Prince George's County?
You know, that's exactly the point that I'm raising. It's every week, a major gut punch. The Prince George's County is receiving a major gut punch that we did not predict. And so could you imagine how difficult it is for us to set a budget when the school system believed that they were about to receive hundreds of millions of dollars? And now they're not about to receive them? It, you know, similar to agencies in the county government. You know, we have had some of these grants for over a decade. I mean, these are people, these are citizens who work in critical areas, who want to support their county, support their government, support their citizens. And, and out of nowhere, all of the funding is gone. And, and that, that will have a catastrophic impact on our county because most of them live in the county. A lot of those federal workers who have been laid off live in the county. I have a relative who just moved out and, and, and got a place to stay and whose job was eliminated two weeks ago. And so all of these things are having a terrible impact on the county.
The, the other issue, and this has been a longstanding issue, was some of the tax burden being placed on the financial backs of seniors. You've always, you know, supported a break for seniors, but the acting county executive is saying that the county may not be able to afford that. How do you respond to that?
You know, it is one of the things that frustrates me the most is that the tax break that I put forward for our seniors would have cost the county, I believe it was less than $15 million a year. Now, I do understand that in these challenging times, we are scrapping for every dollar we can get. But what my message is to the acting county executive and to the members of the council is that we're not going to continue to give these large tax breaks to out-of-town developers who don't live here, who don't care about our community, who simply are here to make a profit, but then deny senior citizens who have helped build this county a basic property tax relief or support. You know, you can't have it both ways. You can't deny the senior citizens, most of whom are African-American, and then give these developers, most of whom who are not African-American, these major 10, 15, 20 million dollar tax breaks whenever they requested. In fact, in some developments in this county, in order to, to build, you must pay into a adequate public schools, facilities, fund, and public safety fund. And on a numerous, a new, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, hello?
Yes, I can hear you. We have a little glitch there, but please continue your point.
The point is, is that we've had developers who are supposed to pay into a fund for public education, but they've received waivers. We've had developers who are supposed to pay into a public safety fund who've had those fees waived. And so I'm not going to continue to allow, I'm going to push the council to not continue to allow the executive branch of government waiving all of these legally mandated fees for these developers to contribute to the county and at the same time not provide any senior citizens relief. And so that's conversations that we'll be having in the near future.
So with that said, how do you attract developers who you want to come in to help contribute to the tax base? This is a transactional relationship. You want them to come, they may want to come, but they may want something for coming to the county. So how do you negotiate that?
In my, in my view, it depends on the business and the company. You know, are you bringing jobs with you? Are you, what type of jobs are you bringing? Do we need more housing in certain parts of the county? Is that going to benefit the county? Or do we really need an industry? Now, we're fighting to bring industries that will bring in significant tax revenue. Then I believe you consider those different incentives, business incentives. But if you're not bringing quality jobs, if you're not bringing additional tax revenue, if you're not an industry that's going to contribute to our economy, then perhaps you don't need those tax breaks. Or it is not, we don't have a vested interest in giving you those tax breaks. So I, I think it depends on the, the industry, how many jobs, what quality of jobs, and, and what potential tax revenue we can make.
The acting county executive has also proposed this, you know, this phone tax. Have you had a chance to look at that? And how, and exactly how might that, how might that work?
It's my understanding that based off of the bill that the acting county executive transmitted- It's my understanding that based off of the bill that the acting county executive transmitted to the council is that each person has a phone line. In addition to paying your phone bill, there will be a up to $3.50 tax on each phone line each month. That's essentially how that will work. You know, we had conversations about the senior tax credit and this together. But it seems like there's a desire to delay the senior tax credit, but proceed with telecommunications tax. So all of those, those things were scheduled to be on our agenda next Tuesday. I have removed those items until we have some clarity of how we can work together on ensuring that if that is something that the county must do financially, that the residents benefit.
Yeah, I mean, it's it's almost kind of like, you know, if you if you live in Prince George's, your phone bill is going to go up. So, you know, maybe you want to move over the line somewhere so that, I mean, I, you know, I say that kind of tongue in cheek, but, you know, again, it it may be a struggle to make the county more attractive if there's a chance that you could be nickelled and dimed. And and let's be clear, Prince George's is not the only municipality that is dealing with these issues. But certainly it it may raise a question in, you know, in someone's mind, as you mentioned earlier, about coming to the county as a resident or state. So.
No, absolutely, which is why I'm pushing data centers so hard. Because if we were able to generate an extra several hundred million, we would not be considering things like the telecommunications tax. And in fact, we would be considering tax breaks. And so we, the bottom line is that we have to generate additional revenue as soon as possible.
Talk to me about your thoughts regarding what President Trump said about not having the FBI headquarters come to Greenville.
You know, that's another blow to Prince George's County because the county was prepared to build an entire infrastructure around that facility. The county was awarded that site fair and square through a competitive process and and we won. But unfortunately, the president has demonstrated yet again that he doesn't care about the rules. He doesn't care about all of the hard work that we put in to compete and to be successful. You know, it it feels like, as it relates to Prince George's County, as it relates to DC, as it relates to our federal workforce, that the president does not realize that we are Americans too. You know, we don't, we want a president working for us, not against us. And it seems like he has chosen really to be president just for a certain type of person, you know. And but that is devastating because we had small businesses. We had county residents. We had the county government, the state, all prepared to put investments around that facility and to make it very successful. And all of that is in question now. My my hope is that Democrats can take back the House and very soon. And we do whatever we can in the courts to make the time go by, you know, frankly. You know, I'm not sure the best way to even deal with each of these issues because we're being attacked on so many different fronts. From teaching, I saw that he instructed the museums that they couldn't talk about slavery and and black and brown history. And and, you know, it's just an incredible time in our democracy. And from part, giving pardons to the domestic terrorists from January the 6th. I mean, there was, is no way that you could have a mob of black people storm a federal building and then receive a pardon, you know, it's just ridiculous. I mean, but I consider those January 6th individuals domestic terrorists. And he incited that. And people did lose their lives. And, you know, it's, 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 it's difficult.
Yeah, I do want to talk about something that that also happened yesterday, the ribbon cutting for the new Prince George's County Health and Human Services building at what is being called Hampton Point inside the Beltway. That's just part of this multi-million dollar development, almost a quarter billion dollars mixed use. What do you think that may symbolize for Prince George's? I mean, unfortunately, yes, a lot of what we've been having in this conversation has been about some of the the more unfortunate things. But what do you think that really kind of symbolizes for the county? Go ahead.
You know, any of those positive infrastructure development projects we want to continue? It's important to me that we show more places in the county love and support. I'm very happy with what they have planned for the Blue Line Corridor, and I'm excited about it. They've also invested a number of millions of dollars for New Carrollton and College Park. But it's important that we see some of that investment in the southern part of the county as well. And and we have not seen that under this administration, frankly. But I am excited for the Blue Line Corridor. I have seen a number of the specs for future developments and future projects. All of that is going to be helpful in increasing our commercial tax base. So we have to do it. As chair, I want to make sure that we don't leave out any part of Prince George's County and that we also invest in the in the southern part of the county.
You were talking about the the previous administration. I do know that barring any political change in the way voters have historically voted in Prince George's County, it appears that Ayesha Brave Boy will be the new county executive. Stranger things have happened. Obviously, that's not a prediction. That's just kind of looking back at the history, assuming that that has happened. And I know that you have been a supporter of hers. Politically, when you're talking about campaigns, it's one thing to campaign, it's another thing to govern. How do you think your relationship with Ayesha Brave Boy moving forward will help put the the county in a better light?
Well, you know, Ayesha Brave Boy is is honest. What she says in the front room is exactly what she says in the back room. Her intentions and her love for this county are so clear. You know, she's a graduate of Largo High School and then graduated from the University of Maryland and then Howard Law School. And so she's deeply rooted in the success of Prince George's County. She has two senior citizen parents who still live here in the county. And so I plan to support her because I know she's going to have a million and one difficult decisions to make. You know, when you're dealing with a major structural deficit that she did not create, that is scheduled to double very soon, it means that there are going to have to be major cuts in the county budget. It means that we're going to have to attract additional industries very, very quickly. And to your point about what happened in Northern Virginia, not everybody was happy with that. But I have seen in Northern Virginia, they were able to reduce property taxes on their residents because they got this influx of money in certain counties in Northern Virginia. And I think that's something that everyone, the residents, you know, would appreciate in the county. And so I know that the task before her is difficult. And the council is committed to working with her to help carry out her vision. There are certain things in our county that have been problematic for decades that have been unresolved, unaddressed. And and I know that she has already started to put things in place to address them. And so I'm I'm excited and very supportive.
Finally, with your new leadership as Prince George's County Council Chair, how do you believe that your your leadership will will change? What will that look like moving forward when compared to past chairs?
Well, I intend to be very collaborative. I have, since Tuesday, I've met with what feels like 100 people, but I will be collaborative. I will have a listening ear. I'm going to find the win wins where I can. I want all of Prince George's County to have resources. In the past, depending on what side of the power dynamic you're on, you might not get any new schools, community centers, libraries, nothing. And 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 that just hurts the residents in the end. So I want to create a system where all of Prince George's County can win. I also want to work very closely with our county executive, recognizing our times, recognizing that we are under constant attack from the federal government. And if there was ever a time for us to come together, now is that time. I also will be pushing very hard for reform in our parks and rec because we give them over $400 million a year and I don't see it. And I believe that one of the best ways to lower juvenile crime is to invest in some of these youth programs, these youth jobs programs. This summer, I will announce for my district, we will have hundreds of year round jobs for the youth in my district. And we're, we've been working on it for over a year and a half and it's finally going to come to fruition this summer. And so I'm going to use this opportunity to create programs that hopefully will be.
You were saying about the youth jobs this summer. I'll let you wrap up that last point. You were talking about the youth jobs. I'll let you wrap up that final point.
Yeah, so I hope to to use my tenure as chair to create and announce a number of initiatives and programs that I hope will be replicated throughout the county. And I'm only going to be chair for one year. I believe that when you have so many council members who are so talented, that it's important to pass the baton. And I'm not going to hold on to that baton longer than this legislative year. And so I'll be working with the next chair and the next vice chair team to make sure that they have all of the tools and knowledge and ability to be successful as possible so that when I pass the gavel on in December, that they get to hit the ground running on day one. I'm starting, you know, three, four months into the legislative calendar. And that's, you know, unfortunate.
Prince George's County Chair Edward Burrows III, thank you so much. I appreciate your time. Good luck to you. We'll be in touch.
All right. Thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity.
Sure thing. That is the Daily Drum for this Wednesday, April 2nd. I'm Harold Fisher. Good night.